We have our attendants squared away. Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes from our meeting, which was only two weeks ago, folks, if you're having deja vu? It's because we were just here. Right? No, it was late. We were supposed to stop at 8:15. Yes. Yeah, no, that's right.
It was really late.
It was late because, yes. And then we tried to, yeah, we did the rest of the meeting. It was important.
I do the minutes based on Jean's notes, and Jean's notes are pretty precise.
No, and I also remember very specifically, remember it was like, we're like, we're supposed to stop now, and we just, we needed it. It was good. You did it, Sarah. You did weather that long one. Good. That's a good thing. Good, okay. If everyone has reviewed, anyone else need more time? Then I would like to make a motion to approve the April 21st meeting minutes. Can I get a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Thank you, everybody. And here we are at regular business. WLS report. Francis. Beth, can you give Francis the mic? You're doing it.
Okay. The WLS board met on the 26th of April, and I think it was one of the longest meetings I've ever had, because the agenda was quite packed and the issues are quite substantial. So we spent a lot of time on it and discussing all the issues one by one. And these issues pretty ripe for a decision, and they'll be coming up for our next meeting. I would have loved to brief you in detail of all of them, but I would like to wait until the board approves it, then I can give you the details. But let me just give you the highlights of it. The first thing is we revised the WLS bylaws. You know, every bylaw has a statement of vision and mission statement. And you may recall that the board set up a strategy committee, I was chairing, and it met for a period over a year, and we have now completed our report and submitted it to the board for discussion, and it will take a decision on that at our next meeting. So one of the things we did is we looked at the current vision and mission statements in some detail, and we updated it, we revised it. I would like to spell out the details at our next meeting. So that's one thing. The second one is the whistleblower protection policy. The New York State apparently has passed a legislation recently on this very subject, or the whistleblower protection. And we looked at that legislation, and we are reflecting that in our own policy as well. I will spell that out, so there's some detail at our next meeting. As you know, all public libraries required, public libraries funded by the state must submit necessarily a report to the state every year. And in our case, we, the report is almost complete now, and in the process of being submitted. So as soon as it's submitted, then I try to make a copy of that available to this board as well. You may recall that our last meeting, I sort of talked at some length about the problems of Mount Vernon Public Library. And the board at the last meeting finally approved the transfer of the Central Library on an interim basis, a studio basis, to the Episcopal Field Library. Better take a drive up there and see what a library is.
Not a big library.
Beautiful library. Anyway, and the library has requested it, understand they're ready to take on that responsibility. And the PLDA looked at that, approved it, and so did the board. So that is now a settled matter. It doesn't mean that all is well in the Kingdom of Mount Vernon, but they're still working on a number of issues. The last, well, the next issue is more of an information for this board, is that we approved almost half a million dollars, $465,000, to be added to the capital budget in order to complete the work of replacing the current library hardware with a new one, a new network infrastructure designed to let, to be implemented by all participating libraries, enabling them to terminate their network service with WLS anytime they want. You can help me out on a technical base, but I understand that up until now, all the libraries have been serviced centrally by WLS as far as their network is concerned. And this is good, but it's also dangerous in case of accident or in case of hacking or in case of any problems, and this affects all the libraries. So it's not advisable. So it's been decided that to the extent possible, each library should be, to the extent possible, independent, develop their own kind of network. And so they don't have to depend on the central service provided by WLS. I hope I got that right.
I think you did.
So that hardware is now in the process of being purchased, installed, and it should be operational by the end of, the end of the year, possibly.
Questions?
Yeah.
So this is about the cybersecurity?
No, no, that's different. This is about WLS changing the way it provides telecommunications. Previously, as Francis said, it was, there was no choice. You had to work through WLS.
Right.
Now they're reconfiguring the situation, Dan, to give libraries an option to do it independently for reasons of economy or, you know, having better control. But I did want to talk about the cyber attack, the ransomware attack.
Okay.
I was waiting for Francis to finish.
Thank you.
So that's right. And the last one is, I hope you have been participating in this training session provided by the trustee handbook club. The last one was at the last weekend. The topic discussed was planning and evaluation. It was fantastic, those who were able to attend it. It is so relevant to what you do here, what trustees should do, what is their responsibility in planning?
I understand.
And evaluating the performance of staff, et cetera. It's fascinating. But I assume that you all have a copy of the handbook, you can look at whatever chapter, paragraph.
Right. And there's one in June coming up.
Yeah, and there's one in June coming up.
On the 14th, and it's PR and advocacy.
Advocacy, exactly. So it's a series of them.
From 5:00 to 6:30.
Yeah. And they go for about an hour and a half, but it's fantastic. It's attended pretty much by interested library people from all over the state.
I agree, yeah. These, I've missed the last few. I got reminders, and I just, I missed them, but they are, I've attended three, and they're phenomenal. It makes you excited about being a trustee, and it's very applicable. Yeah, they record it, yes, good. Excellent.
All right. And that's all from me.
And I would like to sort of follow up my comments in relation to Daniel's question. And I have the press release from the Westchester Library System. And the title is "April 2022 Ransomware Attack." The main topic that everybody should realize happily, no patron data was compromised, but in the middle of April, there was a significant ransomware attack that was made upon the Westchester Library System servers. And as the head of IT at WLS, Wilson.
Arana.
Arana, thank you. Had indicated, we had suffered one a few years before, and it actually damaged some libraries, in particular, Osning was impacted. But WLS learned from this serious attack years back, and they really worked towards securing the WLS online system environment from attack. And what's so anxiety provoking is not only is it all a record of our materials, but there's our information, our names and things like that. And so WLS, I have to give them credit, we're amply prepared. And so they say, "The WLS network was the target of a ransomware attack last week. The security measures in place were able to prevent the brunt of the attack. Again, no patron data was compromised as a result of this attack. Due to the nature of the public computers, they were easier to exploit. Although WLS has removed the most visible elements of the ransomware and the machines may appear to be usable, we feel it is pertinent to do a full computer restore due to the sophisticated nature of this attack. We're working quickly to make sure all public machines are safe for patron usage. Therefore, we're leaving most of the public computers offline until a member of the WLS team can perform the necessary tasks. The main goal of WLS is to protect and provide a safe internet environment for all its patrons. Thank you for understanding and patience during this time." And the good news for our library is, we have been in the process of moving away from the PCs as furnished by WLS, so it did not impact us at all. Our service continued during this attack. We have our own computers, and we have our own firewalls and safety. Thanks to the board's assistance, we're able to protect ourselves. And, you know, it's a serious thing. And you would think that a library wouldn't be a focus, but it's not true. And they went after other library systems too as well. So the good news is, you know, we escaped unscathed.
Great.
This underscores the importance of getting this hardware and installers.
I have a question on the Central Library, and Tom, if you can give us or Francis, the significance of the Central Library in our system, and why, and what implications, obviously, aside from what Mount Vernon Library is going through, the decision to move the Central Library?
I don't maybe you could have.
And what's the significance of the Central Library in our system?
Well, you know, Dan, that's a good question, and it's an arguable point, because when the Central Library concept was first premiered, it was in the 1950s, a totally different environment than here and now. And libraries were physical vessels, and there was no access in any kind of remote way. And having a library, you know, essentially the Library of Congress for Westchester was truly important. Now, as time has moved on, technology's become obviously more and more important, electronic materials are available. The Westchester Library System has very successfully implemented not just a circulation system, which arrived in the 60s, but a fully integrated library system, which allows for significant resource sharing between libraries. So you don't need to go to the Central Library, you know, with the hopes that it's there. You know, any of us can go online and find out what any of the 38 libraries have. And the great feature is, thanks to funding from the county, we have a delivery service that will take something. So if Cory wants a book in Yonkers and he wants it delivered here, it happens, and it doesn't cost. And vice versa. If Beth wants a book from White Plains, and she's going to be in South Salem, it can be delivered there, and she can pick it up there. A lot of people have material dropped at the Huguenot Children's Library, adult material, because it's a shorter drive and no parking problems. We all know that. So the success of, or the viability of a Central Library is far more debatable, Dan, than it was. There was money that was being funneled to the Mount Vernon Library to purchase collections that maybe served underserved populations, and some of it was being moved towards electronic format, because the idea was that any library in the system is harder to get to than somebody with a phone or a device. And so that's been the trend. Now, Mount Vernon has been very proud of its status as a Central Library, and is very protective of keeping that. And so as these changes and trends have gone on, it's been controversial, particularly in that community. And relative to why the change has been made, Francis knows more than I, but I know enough to say that there has been some reporting irregularities in regards to the annual report that all libraries are obligated to submit to the state of New York, have to submit, in order to make sure that, you know, that things are being chronicled and that we are doing the right thing and that we're being honest. Mount Vernon has had some significant deficits in that reporting structure. They've had a succession of library directors since I've been here. There's been eight. Yeah, a lot. So there's been a lot of change. The board has been somewhat controversial, has, in some instances, some people feel that it's more involved in the day-to-day operations.
Yeah.
One board member had some issues with the criminal justice system, I guess, not fully resolved. So it's a bit of a, it's kind of a mess. And so with all this going on, the state has been involved, the regions are looking at this now, Francis, about the possibility of possibly.
So dismantling the board completely.
Removing the board, and as a short term, tonight, as a short term, as you heard from what Francis indicated, taking Central Library status away from Mount Vernon for a temporary two-year period until hopefully things can be fixed. And if in two years' time they're not, then who knows what will happen.
Yeah, the feeling that is very unlikely that, can't see ahead anyway, but it's very unlikely that it's going to go back, because the problems that have been experienced in Mount Vernon are quite serious. It's not just regular reporting, but also some financial.
There's some financial.
Yeah. The board has not been meeting regularly and responsibly. You guys are doing very, very well here, but not so in Mount Vernon. Not just the board, but that has also affected the administration, the library, the head of a director, and then because it fell down to the staff. So all has not been well at all, and this is not something that just happened yesterday, but I think it has been building up over the years of time, and no one really had the will to address it and correct it. So the world has sort of been watching it, and I think it's reached a point of no return.
Yeah, it's a domino effect that happens.
It's a real serious issue.
Thank you, Francis. Appreciate it.
The Central Library is of course a matter of prestige, as you put it. It gives a certain standing to a library among other libraries, and so it's a little bit of quarter-to-quarter mediation for Mount Vernon to lose that privilege.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Francis. Moving on, President's Report. I don't have a report other than to remind everybody that our elections are May 17th. Please vote. Please vote in favor of our library budget. We've been through it many, many times now, and humbly request support. Thank you.
I would be an electoral inspector, so.
What's that?
I would be an electoral inspector for that, so.
I hope so, yeah. Oh, good. Good job, Francis. Thank you for doing that. Okay, we'll move on. Yeah, oh, good. Double thanks then. Director's Report.
Thank you, Whitney. Trying to make it quick. Library operations, I'm happy to say, it's been gradual, but we have seen more and more activity in the library. Families are returning. We're starting to see more middle-aged, senior folks coming back, which has been a real challenge. When, and when we reopened, the library was like, it was, the population had really turned, and it was almost predominantly the younger age people, which was so unusual based on our previous experience. But we're seeing more and more people come back to the library. Our programs for preschool children, school-aged children, teens, adults are being better attended. And so it's really reassuring to see the library walk towards a semblance of what it was. And it's slow, and it's slow for our peer libraries in the county, but we are seeing that. And we really think, hopefully as this pandemic really starts to wind down, with good weather, we'll see even more activity, and with an exciting summer programming, summer reading for children, our summer programs, I think the statewide theme is ocean of possibilities. We expect to see more children and more families come back to the library. And also, we have some great adult programming and teen program too as well. In terms of grants, you know that we are waiting on two significant grants through the New York State Construction Grant Program, $342,674 for the third-floor renovation with a foundation match of $114,000, and a smaller but still important grant for the Huguenot Children's Library of $17,813 in grant monies. And the HCL grant will be to replace the aging ductless air conditioning units that are on all three levels of the Children's Library, and they've been there since the partnership. So kindly reopened the building back in the 90s, so it's good that we'll have that capital expense paid for, and then we have a match of $5,900 there. We expect that things will be announced by our state legislative delegation. They usually are the point persons for announcing the grants, and that'll be in June. And if we're lucky, we'll see the money maybe September, perhaps October. But we are very much ready to move forward. We don't want to wait like we did with the last phase because of COVID. We are hoping to get our orders in place. We're not ordering until the checks arrive, but we want to push the button and order once the money is in the bank account. And so we actually have a meeting next week to go over that. We're still waiting to start the next phase of the fire stopping and safety project. The architects hired a team to go through and look at issues that relate to the protection of the building and appropriate fire stopping, and we're waiting for their analysis to start that. We are looking at two grants for August for submission. As you folks know, we have gotten $2 million in grants, the most in the county, I'm proud of that. And we've been able to transform this building, thanks to the foundations matches as well. And so we're looking at one grant that will be directed towards the Huguenot Children's Library. And the facility was, of course, built in the 1870s and was renovated in the 1990s. But one thing that we wasn't really fully addressed is storage. And so storage is a bit of a mess when you go there. You sort of go behind the desk, and there's all these things there. So we're working with a contractor to come up with proposals, to come up with efficient, safe, usable storage for this very tiny space. And there's also some other millwork that is a little tired, the kitchen in the basement because of the floods that have happened, you know, you know, and probably the floor. We're looking to try to do all of that, and we're hoping that we can gain the money. And there's some pointing that needs to be done outside. The, you know, the foundation is stone, it's really old, and it's starting to come a little loose. I'm not sure if we can get that in the grant. I have a call into WLS, but if we can, why not? So that's that grant. The grant that we're looking at for the main library is one that we think is long overdue, and it relates to the fact that this library, which won awards in the 70s, acoustically has no appropriate engineering. You know that we were built with this lovely atrium space with high ceilings. The problem is, as nice as that looks, the building's loud, really loud, when there's people here, you know, you can hear people talking and noise bounces. So a few years ago, we commissioned a study by acoustical engineers to give us recommendations of what to do to make the library less noisy. We want people here, but we're trying to figure out ways to thicken the sound. And we are now in the process of sharing the report with different vendors and looking, actively looking for a number of vendors who can, you know, who can do this work for us. We've gotten, I think we're going to have three, maybe four quotes, and so we really, it's such a, you know, there's a, we're doing it apples to apples, and we really want the opportunity to see what others, what vendors can recommend to us. So those are the grants that we're hoping for. And the good news is, as you folks know, thanks to, despite the governor's recommendation, the legislature overruled her very low-ball construction grant money, so we have a fair amount of money available. So we have a good chance of getting the money and maybe 100% fully funded, which is what we had this year for both of our grants.
Sorry, Tom, just to clarify, the work that you described for both the Huguenot Children's Library and for the acoustic improvements here, you're getting and working with contractors to get quotes so that you can then put that into the grant application?
Right.
Yeah, got it.
And typically, there, you know, we need to get, we need to be able to give documentation. It can't be, you know, we want to do X, Y, and Z, and we think it's going to cost this much.
Right, understood, yeah. Yeah, you want to show that, yes, that you've done your due diligence and that you understand, yes, what the market is bearing for construction costs.
And the state library has really sort of beefed up their team. Before, it was a little dread bear, but now they've got a number of really people who are on top of things. So when we ask for a grant, we have to pretty much prove that we did it, and we have to show photographs, and we have to show financial documentation. It's good because.
Reimbursement-based grants, right.
Absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
So that's that. Let's see. We're still waiting on this, the family foundation grant monies for a couple of grants, so we'll keep you all posted about that. We talked about the next session for the trustee handbook. Whitney, of course, talked about our election on May 17th. We have one trustee position available, and also the budget. Please vote. Our AARP ended successfully, not nearly the same kind of numbers pre-pandemic, but of course that was impossible, because a small group of very brave AARP people chose to come back to the library instead of a drop-in. They did it appointment-based, and it was successful. They were fully booked. Didn't serve the same numbers, but it just was impossible. But still, you'll be happy to know that 260 returns were prepared and submitted electronically, and 240 questions and people were dealt with in regards to non-return issues. So well over 500 people were helped with this process. And when I thanked Tim, who's the leader, many years, great guy, and I said, you know, thank you on behalf of the community, he said, "We're coming back next year, and we're hoping things will be better, and we're hoping to go back to where we were." They were not the biggest fans of the appointment-based, because it's so time-consuming. But to set it up like we did before, where people would sign up and wait, you know, first come, first served, and people would have their taxes prepared, in that model, they served over 1,200 people, and it was just easier, it wasn't as complicated. So they're really amazing, those folks, and they'll be back next year, knock on wood. We had a meeting recently for CURE, which is the Coalition to Combat Racism, you know, focused here in, really in the San Shore area of the county. And we had the Five City One Book, which was Heather McGee's The Sum of Us, and it was successful. And she, Heather, appeared here via, we used our camera system, thanks to the staff that operated it. And it was also a Zoom meeting, and we had probably 60-plus people in the audience that day. It was great. And we are looking to continue that. We're hoping at a minimum to do this and quite possibly make it more inclusive of the county, you know. So that's something that CURE will work on. They'll be working on the county legislature to continue to obtain funding, which is great to do that. And I was telling one of the members of our audience, Rhiannon, that they're thinking about trying to sort of change the focus for next year, and hopefully they're trying to bring in this really amazing young author, Jason Reynolds, who's published lots of really who's published lots of really terrific, well-regarded books for middle school and YA your kids.
Yep.
So he's a superstar.
Yeah, we've read some of his books.
He's really good.
Excellent.
So that's what we're hoping to do and we're hoping to try to, you know, not that we don't want a mature and adult crowd, but we're hoping to try to pull in some of our younger people with a very successful charismatic author. So, you know, keep you posted on that. Let's see, what else? Our friends continue to work and work hard. They're still accepting donations in small bundles and the store is open on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. The foundation is really the story of the night. Their gala is next week, next Thursday, at Green Tree Country Club. And I encourage people here in the audience and out in the stratosphere to consider attending. It'll be a fun night with wonderful food and drink. There'll be a live and a silent auction. Sponsorship opportunities are there. And honestly, the money that they raise will come back to us. You folks know our wish list, we were kind of greedy when we asked for over $200,000. You know, our match for the third floor grant, our museum passes, Legos for our kids, more great tech stuff in our teen area. Across the board, the monies that we're asking for represent all areas of library and touch all populations. We're looking for a product that will help us connect with families who, where English is not their first language. So all this costs money. If the foundation is successful, we might be able to aspire to be fully funded. I don't know. But so think about this gala if you have some time in your schedule. It'll be fun and it'll be really worthwhile to the library and to our community. And that's it. Sorry, what on?
Thank you, Tom. Do you want to talk about our operational status?
I can.
You did already a personnel report?
None.
None.
Maybe just in passing, I could say in another capacity that the Rotary Club of New Rochelle is sponsoring the gala. We bought half page of ad and we're going to have a complete table of Rotarians who are going to be there for that event, so.
Thanks for your support and for the Rotary support, Francis. That's good, yep. We are, our board here purchased an ad as well and of course we all know what we're supporting because we live and breathe it and very, very grateful to the foundation. Thank you. Yep, and it's always a really fun night. Committee reports. We have budget committee. I think we have no additional report other than the work we've been doing, buildings and grounds, no report tonight, moving right along, community relations.
No report, Tom pretty much, I think, Guardian Gala. There's also, there's community resource night at New Rochelle High School also on May 12th. So that may be something. And I got Denise's.
I know, I know.
They had a great, successful job for you here in partnership with First Source. Had about 75-plus members looking for jobs. A lot of people are hiring. Everybody wants to work. That's what we're seeing. And then, hold on, hold on, let me just catch up here. I'm just going to hit some points here. Website is again, being looked at, evaluating potential updates and then obviously the expenses associated with it. Implement programs, some of them happen or will be happening. Martial arts, movie marathon, Song Catchers volunteer concert happened, financial literacy workshop for teens, that happened April 30th. Acting Shakespeare, 10 to 25 attendee that happened May 1st. Cheer yoga, two times a week, that's still happening. Doesn't say the day, so you can check the bulletin.
I can't, one is Wednesday.
It's at evenings, two times.
Oh, evenings.
And midday. Cheer yoga, two times a week and yoga meditation in the evening.
I know, one is a Wednesday at 1:15.
Thank you. And then obviously our gallery, May 15th, there's more teams. We have the elementary school exhibit, the middle school, high school exhibit will be May 22nd. And Lincoln Corridor exhibit will be in June as part of the citywide Juneteenth celebration. And Inertial Arts Association exhibit will be July to August. Programs coming up, mindfulness meditation, May 12th, 19th, and 26th. That will be virtual program. Freedom Land USA, May 14th, to lecture presentation of memorabilia from Framed Bronx Amusement Park. Sound Shore Corral Spring Concert, May 15th. Song Catchers rehearsal begins May 16th, Sing Your Heart Out rehearsal, sorry. Manzanar National Historical Site Lecture, that will be May 18th. Women Jazz Assembly, May 22nd. Film series, Helter Skelter, June 4th. And the citywide Juneteenth celebration. Pre-Juneteenth paper quilt making workshop will be June 9th. Gospel choir performance, June 17th, Friday evening. Bokandeya African Dance Troupe Workshop and Performance will be June 20th. And.
I think Tom already talked about the AARP.
The bid. The bid. After months of discussion, the New Rochelle bid, downtown improvement district agreed to provide $15,000 to the Friends to Fund and Co-Sponsor Inertial Public Library and our bid programming. So is that the summer program that happens outside?
Among other things, yeah. Yeah, the bid has really.
The Fall Fest things, the pumpkin.
There's a wide variety. They really, we get a lot of lobbying.
I'm so glad I'm coming back.
Lisa Iskowitz really worked with Carol Lippman and.
And they just rebranded themselves to.
They did.
New Row Downtown, right? Good job.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to hear. Parents were asking about those activities.
So can I ask a question? Do we have plans or is the library participating at all in Juneteenth?
Oh, absolutely. We were part of the group that started to Zoom meet in January.
Excellent.
And so we have, I think, we have an event on the actual Juneteenth because there's less programming. But one of the things that was decided amongst all the parties that are participating in Juneteenth is to not try to book things against each other, to try to keep.
Spread them out.
Spread them out so that people and families aren't stuck having to make decisions. But if we sort of spread it out, it will give people more opportunities over a longer period of time and there won't be conflicts where people struggle. So we are, Lisa has really been on top of this, Toby too. It's, I think it's exciting. There are some things, we tried to get performers, Fiery String Sisters, they're really good. We're going to get these, a group of women who play amazing jazz later on, not Juneteenth. And there's an opera that was composed by a young man at Yale who's in their graduate music program and it's Ezra Jack Keats, The Snowy Day.
Yep.
It's really kind of cool. So didn't get them for Juneteenth, but the conversation continues.
Thank you, excellent. Good. Finance committee? I don't think we have nothing for tonight. Personnel committee? Lucille's not here. Nothing to report. Policy committee? Nothing to report tonight. Special projects? Only comment is that the strategic planning committee will be meeting, I think, May 24th was the decided upon date that worked for everybody. So we will be able to report back in June about next steps with respect to implementing our strategic plan. That brings us to, any questions on any of the committee work? No, no? Okay, that brings us to public discussion. Marjorie, nothing? Good. Any questions, comments? We had a couple of sprinty marathons tonight, so I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Beth, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good job, everyone, meeting adjourned, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.